I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Go, Paul Kelly.
Ms. Edling, present. Ms. Stewart, here. Ms. Patson, here. Mr. Radkowski.
The Lead.
Mr. Singh.
Here.
Mr. Wolf.
Present.
Mr. Zoff.
Here.
Ms. Gadsden.
Here.
Mr. White.
Present.
Fire exits, Sam Murray.
Fire exits are in the back of the LGI.
Great. We have a student presentation today, so you want to introduce them?
I'd like to introduce Ms. Wagi and Ms. Edling from Forestale and the students from Forestale. And they're going to share a very important project that they have been working on.
That was a really short delay, Mike. I just, we just got someone.
I said I was.
You said you were close, and I was like, "Delay?" And it's like, it's one minute.
So, my name's Ms. Wagi. I'm 4th grade teacher from JV Forestale School.
My name is Lisa Edling. I'm the 5th grade teacher at JV Forestale School.
I'm Nico McGibb.
Okay.
I'm 5th grade.
I'm Karen Beersley, and I'm in 4th grade.
I'm Cody De La Torre, in 3rd.
So, these are three of the six students that are on the team here this evening. And we'd like to say that we're very proud of them. They've done a great job this season. Okay, so you guys can stand over here if you want, with the mic. And I'll start off with, we are Team Falcons.
We are Team Falcons. This year's theme.
Oh, hold on. So, we're going to start off by explaining what First LEGO League is. And then the students are going to present what they did at our meetings and what they did at the challenge. So, here's a short video about what First LEGO League is.
First LEGO League is a fun, exciting, mentor-based, experiential STEM program for kids ages 9 to 16. It's an alliance between FIRST, an international organization to inspire young people founded by Dean Kamen and the LEGO Group. It's one in a progression of four FIRST programs designed to foster 21st century life skills and spark kids' interest in science, technology, engineering, and math, so they become innovative problem solvers able to tackle the world's biggest challenges. Each year, FIRST LEGO League teams are presented with a real-world theme, like transportation or waste management. Over a minimum eight-week season, they select and research a problem based on the topic, then devise innovative ways to help solve that problem. Teams also build and program a LEGO Mindstorms robot to solve a series of robot game missions, all while practicing the signature core values which emphasize good sportsmanship and happy learning. If you'd like to get involved with FIRST LEGO League in your environment, visit us online. A mission to inspire young people founded by Dean Kamen and the LEGO Group. It's one in.
So, FIRST LEGO League teams get to do several things. We get to research challenges facing today's scientists, design, build, test, and program robots using LEGO Mindstorms technology, apply real-world math and science concepts, learn critical thinking, team-building, and presentation skills, participate in tournaments and celebrations. And FIRST LEGO League encourages high-quality work, emphasizes the value of others, and respects individuals and the community.
Okay, so what does every FIRST LEGO League team need? Two or more adult coaches to guide the team. They recommend two to three students per adult, up to 10 students per team, a suitable meeting place that can accommodate a 4x8-foot playing table and has internet access. The table size and design are the league's specifications to accommodate a pre-cut challenge mat that comes in the challenge kit. The team has to register, and then they're assigned a team number, which you need to register for the competition. You also need a LEGO Mindstorm EV3 kit and the desire to learn, explore, share ideas and talents, and interact as a team. And most important, have fun, which they had a lot of fun this season. So, I also wanted to say that Cheryl Hawkes from the high school, she is a science teacher. She was a big help to us at the beginning of the year in guiding us in the right direction.
FIRST LEGO League is proven to impact students. FIRST LEGO League's positive impact on participants is gratifying and well-documented. Over 87% are more interested in doing long school, and 88% have more interest in attending college.
So, FIRST LEGO League has an off-season challenge, which is happening now through June. So, if anybody wanted to try it out, you would have to register, and you would have, need the LEGO Mindstorm EV3 kit and register. But the only thing different is you wouldn't participate in the challenge. So, if anybody just wanted to try it out, they could now register. So, this is Team Falcons, and this is the opening ceremony at our competition. And the nice thing about LEGO League is everybody is so helpful. Everybody was giving high fives if you needed anything. You could go to another team. The team next to us was letting us use their table to practice on. If you had any questions, they have a chat room where you can ask during the season. So, everybody's very, very helpful to each other.
The research project. This year's theme was Animal Allies. We had to find out how animals interact with people. Then we had to choose an animal and research the problems it faced, the solutions tried by scientists, and come up with a solution to try ourselves. The animal we chose was a honeybee. We started to research the honeybee. Then we discovered that there are many problems the honeybee faces. Then we had Helena Bratman from Green Team come in. She helped us brainstorm solutions to the problems we had found. Why honeybees are dying now? Bees disappearing. Beekeepers are saying 70% of their bees are disappearing. Colony collapse disorder, CCD. How can swayed bees leave the hive and the queen and never return? Pesticides. Seventeen detectable pesticides are in each patch of pollen. Flowerless landscapes. Bees need pollen to make food to survive, but there are a lot of flowerless landscapes, so bees are dying. Population going down. The bee population has been going down since World War II, from 5 million to 2.5 million. Feromites. Feromites, a parasite, are capable of transmitting viruses to more and more honeybees.
The solution we chose. The solution we chose was send four people and to make their yard a bee-friendly backyard with pollinated plants. We handed out information from Cornell University about making your yard a bee-friendly backyard. We also handed out information on what kids can do now. We passed out seed packets which had a bee fact and was sealed with our teammate. Putting together seed packets and handing them out at the competition. Presenting our research project to the judges. This is a video of the season's challenge.
So, this is the first thing that they saw. And this is, comes out August 30th at noon time. And this is for all the teams to look, and it's a different theme each year. So, this is what this year's theme was.
Welcome teams to FIRST LEGO League's Animal Allies Robot Game. Do we need animals, or do they need us? Answer: yes. This robot game showcases just a fraction of our wonderful story with animals. As you work on the missions, pay attention to the many ways innovation and technology have enabled humans and animals to exchange health, friendship, amusement, protection, and love. As you'll see, there are many fun problems left to solve. Shark ship. The shark starts in its tank, balance, not touching the walls of the tank. The robot has three opportunities for points. It can push the tank into this rectangle or into this rectangle for more points. But you can get serious points if the delivered shark isn't touching the tank walls. Service dog action. The robot needs to travel east between the barriers and completely cross the fence. As the fence gets pushed down, the dog sits like she would in real life if a car was coming. Animal conservation. Before the match starts, you put an animal on the switching model by hand. The reindeer model starts in base for that purpose, but you can use another animal if you like. From there, no more hands. The actual mission is for the robot to switch animals, loading and unloading as needed. Each animal switched counts for both teams. At the end of the match, the referee is going to be counting pairs of identical animals on a common field. And again, both teams get credit for every new pair. Feeding. The refrigerator is set up with a color randomized stack of food pieces inside. It's the robot's job to take the food out and distribute it to certain animal areas. Points are earned for each piece. It doesn't matter which area a color goes to, as long as the colors aren't mixed in that area. It's possible to do this mission without sensors, but mastery of sensors would save time. Biomimicry. The robot needs to hang this mechanical ghetto on the test wall. Instead, or for additional points, the robot itself can hang on the wall. Milking automation. The robot needs to guide this cow into the carousel and then turn it until milk comes out. Pushing the lever too far causes manure to come out. You can get points if both come out, but it's worth more points to get only milk. Panda release. The model starts closed counterclockwise. It's the robot's job to close it clockwise instead, which shows a panda on the map going back into the wild. Camera recovery. The robot needs to get this camera back to base. Training and research. Here, there are many opportunities for points. One is to bring the dog and trainer from base out to this rectangle. Another is to bring the zoologist to the same rectangle from the panda's area. And finally, points are earned for each manure sample delivered to that rectangle. This should be quite a challenge, because you're only allowed to transport one disc at a time. Beekeeping. The robot needs to get the bee onto the beehive, and the honey must come out. If the honey ends up in base, that's worth more points. Prosthesis. The robot needs to bring this pet who is missing her legs to base. There, the team will hand install a wheeled prosthesis for her. For added points, the robot can deliver her to the farm area, where she will have fun playing with other animals for the rest of her life. Seal in base. By the end of the match, the seal needs to be in base and not broken. Milk in base. The robot needs to get all three milk cylinders to base. Milk on ramp. The robot needs to get all three milk onto the ramp or onto the ramp in an unaided fashion or onto the ramp in an unaided fashion with all three standing. All samples. The robot gets enhanced points if it's able to get all the manure samples to the target rectangle. Again, you're only allowed to transport one disc at a time. That's our game. We hope you have as much fun playing it as we did making it. Visit www-firstlegoleague.org for more resources to help you and watch your team email blasts for tips and information about events near you. The Animal Ally season is brought to you in part by our global sponsors, 3M, NI, Rockwell Automation, and of course, LEGO.
How we designed our robot. How we designed our robot. Using the Mindstorm EV3 kit we built and programmed the robot. Our first robot had a claw with tape on it. It had trouble grabbing the shark tank, so we decided to take the tape off the claw and turn the claw sideways. This claw wouldn't close onto the shark tank. We then decided to change the claw to come straight down. This design worked best.
The missions we chose. The first mission we programmed was to get a shark tank in a specified area on the map without letting the shark hit the sides of the tank. The next mission was to bring a pig back to base and put wheels on it for legs. The third mission was to get the robot to push a cow into cow carousel and turn the carousel around to get it drop milk and not manure. In the competition, the robot got stuck in the middle of the map after completing the cow's carousel. We decided to reprogram the robot to come back to base before our next round.
So, some of the, like, the cow carousel took them like four weeks to make. So, some of the missions took quite a while. So, these are two of the missions. Hopefully. Looking at my computer. We taped two of the missions, the robot completing two of the missions.
They programmed the robot to say "good job" at the end of that one. It took them a while to figure out that one, so they were really proud when they did that.
Copying at the table during the robot challenge.
So, here you can see the 4x8 table with the challenge mat on it. And all of the missions, they have that all set up at the competition already for you?
We also have three rounds at the table. So, and then what they do is they take the highest score at the end.
These are the core values of FIRST LEGO League that we follow during our meetings and at the competition.
Why are core values important? Following core values makes a better team, makes for a friendlier competition, helps you deal with disappointment, encourages others to do their best, encourages sharing with others, and encourages team spirit.
Presentation of core values. We had a lot of fun and learned a lot.
And I just want to show you one other thing. The robot. And it might not go as well on the rug as it does before. And they have something that they like to dance to. It's called "Stir and Fluring Up," ready to have to show. Thank you very much. This is the best.
Good evening. Wow, the students are passing out. The water pipe is going up. Coming up, okay.
It might get stuck on the rug.
Great job.
I would just like to say that our students, they actually really represented our school's future in a fun fashion at the LEGO competition. I couldn't have been more proud, you know, watching our students perform. I would like to give, in honor of them, I would like to hand out a certificate to each one of the students that have presented today. And it's, and the actual certificate says, "Certificate of Participation acknowledges that Nico McGibb represents the Beacon City School District in the FIRST LEGO League competition." Nico. Karen Beersley. Cody De La Torre. Last school year, we looked at introducing the LEGO League robotics program to JV Forestale as just a way of introducing STEM. And we knew that we needed to begin to look at different ways to really motivate our children, you know, thinking outside the box. And, you know, when you look at the way our district works right now, we have things out there for music and arts, you know, we have sports out there for our athletes. But we didn't have anything to really motivate our students who are into sciences, math and science, and technology. So, this is a way to really target, you know, that population of students. And so, I had received an email last school year, and I decided to ask Mrs. Wagi if she'd be interested in the program. She said yes. We found out that they were having an orientation, and to my dismay, it was in Asana. But she decided that she would go, and I was pleasantly surprised. I thought it would be too far. And the rest is history, you know. Mrs. Wagi went out and raised the money, you know, to bring the program to Forestale. And, you know, unfortunately, I wouldn't dare to actually sit off the ground, but I had the opportunity to be there on competition day. But like I said, I couldn't be more proud of our students and for our teachers for that matter. I would just like to, at this point in time, also recognize our teachers, you know, because, you know, without them, we wouldn't be able to see the fabulous work that our students actually do on a day-to-day basis. So... Can you come up, please? And it says, "Certificate of Appreciation to Debbie Wagi. Thank her for her dedication and commitment to the students of the Beacon City School District." "Certificate of Appreciation to Lisa Edling. Thank her for her dedication and commitment to the students of the Beacon City School District." So, what does it take to start a robotics club? Funding. Of course, funding is important. Registration fees for the robot set, the table that's needed, shirts, et cetera. Curious students that love to have fun and explore, and you've seen them today. Teachers that can give the time and commitment needed to help students complete all phases of the program. The program is different from the normal math clubs that we have here in the district, you know, because teachers at Forestale, they spend days and days each week, you know, supporting our students. It wasn't the normal one-day-a-week life. They were, you know, minimum two to three days a week, you know, each week, you know, supporting our students. But I know that we have dedicated teachers throughout the district who wouldn't mind, you know, giving back to our students. So, I think it's a win-win, you know, for all ages, not just for our elementary school students, but also for our middle and high school. My goal is to have the robotics program in every elementary building. I also think that with all the intelligent science teachers we have at our secondary level, a robotics program or something similar would also be a great way to engage our students in real-world application. Thank you, and I hope you enjoyed the presentation.
I have a question for Mr. Ray. So, you mentioned funding, and it's always a good thing. But are you planning on including necessary funding for this and other, you know, programs that you, that you're looking at in the proposed budget that you're starting to develop?
Yes, but the funding for the actual program itself, it isn't substantial. But we need to think outside the box in terms of having a math club that, that, that makes this type of club. Because like I said, it's not the normal one-day-a-week math club that we've had, you know, in our. you know, in our district over the years. It actually takes you guys, you know, willing to support a club where teachers are meeting two or three days a week, you know, with students. So, you know, you gotta be different than the normal club.
Right, so that's, if that takes the extra stipend or funding, are you going to be planning to do that for this budget?
I definitely would.
Okay, alright, good.
We have, some of it, we also have money that Texaco has donated to the district for STEM plan, which we kept in the trust and agency account, which we haven't used because we wanted to have a program. We didn't want to just spend the money, we wanted to have a vision and a, you know, a STEM program. So we can use that as well to supplement.
I'm glad you're putting a plan together and proposing so we can get it done.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, I have a question. So were these teachers paid by stipend for this program, for this year?
That's our goal.
Right.
Moving forward.
No, but so they weren't in our case.
At this point, right, but that is our goal.
Can I just ask Mrs. Wagi, how did you raise the funds?
I went to Mr. Brownell, he's the head of the Chamber of Commerce. And him and his wife directed me to apply for a grant for the community foundations of the Hudson Valley. Because there were so many last year, I did not receive one, but he said his family fund would donate for us, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
How many students overall are involved in this group here, or does it spread out more in some way?
Well, this year, like I said, it was a pilot. So only the six students now at J.B. Forest School, because it happened while I was in the building. Except the goal is to actually start the program in some of the other elementary schools throughout the district and then start it into secondary schools as well, to see, you know, to contribute participation.
Can I ask one more question? I know that we are doing STEM programming, there's, I know that Glennon won a grant and they've done a lot with STEM programming. So is there any discussion within development of curriculum about how to unify these in a way? So that there's a little bit of cohesion to the plan?
So those would be some of the goals with a district-wide curriculum committee, to be able to identify what all of the various school-level projects are, aligning them to our overall priorities, and then figuring out what are the things that can be replicated across and among schools, as well as which things may as nuances within individual schools, so. Well, know that this is, we're in the infancy of many of this and we're trying to build these structures, but that's what the goal of having a district-wide curriculum committee is. So this funnels up and then we're able to be responsive to how we're building consistency and growing, or scaling up our projects.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment to express my how impressed I am and how proud I am that J.B. Forest and staff and students participated in this STEM project. Actually, I came across, I came across the first organization when I was doing some research on STEM on my own and suddenly I found out that there was a Beacon, Lego League junior group or a Lego group. And so I started to hunt around and then one of the teachers had told me that you were coming to a presentation. So I'm very delighted to finally meet the students and get to know more of the program. And the first organization's, you know, I know has some resources as well. I'm sure you've already seen it, the white paper by Vicky Davis, made a tape, a lot of stuff, yeah. So I mean, I'll be full supporter of STEM.
Mr. Ray, did you have anything else?
No.
Well, thank you so much, students and parents, for bringing them tonight. We really do appreciate it. The highlight of our evening is always seeing kids at the board meetings. So we really do appreciate you bringing them out on a January chilly night. So thank you so much and we look for more in the future.
Thank you.
Our next workshop is going to be the firehouse presentation. May I have your seat up?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say congratulations to Team Falcon and to the teachers who make our city proud. Keep up the good work. To the board members, I'd like to thank the pollsters for the work you put in. Dedicated, many hours, not paid for, sometimes thankless, most of the times rewarding. One of the most important jobs in our community and I want to just tell you how much I respect each and every one of you before I start. I'm here tonight because, as you know, for many years the city spent a ton of money on looking, of doing studies of what we should do to move our fire into the 21st century. And every study came back and talked about consolidating into one building. We spent a ton of money on studies. When I became a mayor, we took one study and we started implementing parts of the study. Full-time paid chief, getting rid of a platform ladder truck going to a queen. The last part of this study is to start planning to get to a consolidated firehouse. It's been going on for 20 years. With the support of the council, I got them to give me permission. I got a grant from the county. I put a committee together to look at places where we could look to put consolidated fires. To ever come to complete a plan, you gotta start the planning. So until we know where we could put it and what it would cost to get that piece of property wherever it might be, and then if we can afford it, secure that piece of property, and then decide how much it's going to cost to build on that piece of property and then when we can afford it, build it, there has to be a start to get to the finish. So the committee has, came here before because they had, out of their, the properties that they chose, and I don't even know them all, but I know two of them was, one was to put the firehouse on Sergeant School property and the other one was to put the firehouse on the Oak Club property and just put a parking lot on the Sergeant School property. And when they were at the meeting, the first time, the board voted that they weren't interested to do either. What I'm here tonight to do is ask you if you would reconsider. I heard your comments, Mr. Rikowski talked about if we build a firehouse and we do an environmental study and we find anything contaminated and we walk away, this school would have issues, which is a valid point. Being here all my life, I don't think we find any. But we took that into consideration. I'm not here tonight to ask you about that consideration. What I'm here to ask you to reconsider tonight, would you at least look at letting us put a parking lot? And I know the first time they came, they showed you a picture like this with a parking lot on both sides of your entranceway. Since they were here, they looked at it again and they came up with one parking lot on your east side of your entranceway with an entrance and an exit right off of 9D, not even using your entranceway. So they have heard your concerns, they're willing to work. What I'm asking you is to reconsider, to think about the parking lot. And I'm not asking you for a decision tonight. What I'm asking is to think about it and if you're open to the idea and you got concerns, let us know what they are so we can try to work them out. So we're not losing two sites because you just voted no on both. So I'm asking you to please reconsider that and get back to us. And if you have any questions, you know, I'm willing to answer them tonight the best I can. It's been a long process and even if you say yes to the parking lot, that might not be the site we go to. Because this committee's got to come back to council with the three sites and explain to them what the cost would be and why they think it's the best. And then the council would have to make a decision. And I know if you decide to do anything, it would have to go to a public referendum on your part. So, no, I'm just asking you to reconsider and let us know if you're open to the idea so we can start moving along. If there's any questions out.
Any questions?
Yeah, I mean, I think that the process is better served to hear directly from the sergeant community and sergeant families as to what their concerns are. Because all we're here to do is represent them. And I don't know if you're open to it, but I would be amenable to giving the mayor some space at Sergeant and I to have a forum with the sergeant families and explain the details of their project and collect their concerns. And I do know from the Elks' presentation that they are amenable, flexible, and I think they deserve a chance to at least address the concerns. And if the concerns still aren't met, then at least they tried. And I think that's what the mayor is asking for, correct?
Yeah, I'm asking for that, but I believe that sergeant parents, who are parents of sergeant students today, won't be parents of sergeant students whenever this gets done. So just asking that select few really don't speak for the whole community, number one. And number two, there's going to have a lot of chance, because first of all, if you decide to say yes, it's got to go to a public referendum if you're going to sell it. So they're going to get a chance to have a say by voting yea or nay, everybody in the community. And number three, we would have to talk about it at our meeting and answer questions to anybody, no matter which site. But I'm willing to go to Sergeant School and talk to the people in that neighborhood too, so, and address their concerns. But I do hear you and, you know, it's an open process. And like I said, this is just saying you'd be open to the idea so, you know, we could choose as the council of the ideas of where we best think it's fit. And we know it's got to go to a public referendum, that's all we're asking for. And I, in my opinion, if a parking lot goes there during the school day, most of the time, nobody will be parked in it. They'll only be parked in it if there's an event going on at the Oak Club and the Firehouse at the same time. And you used to use it to drop students off, walk up your sidewalks. When they use the soccer field over there and Sergeant Avenue's full of cars all parked illegal, they could park down there and walk up to the soccer field. So I think it's a win-win for everybody and I believe it's taken an attractive nuisance off your hands. Because if you look at your piece of property thoroughly, with all the dead trees on it, it becomes a liability to the school district. So I just leave you with that and I ask you to reconsider. And I know you've got a long agenda here, I'm not here to take it up. And I know my presentation is not as exciting as it when you've had before me, but I would ask you to please reconsider. When do you need to know why? You know, we're working with other sites, we're getting information from them, you know. If it's got to go to a referendum, usually have a vote in May and we have a vote in November. You know, so we need to know, you know, whatever your timeframe is. I'm not rushing you to make a decision. What I'm doing is asking you to think about it and come back with any concerns you have, see if we can address the concerns and so you can make a good decision based on it.
Does anybody else have any other questions?
So Mayor Casals, they didn't state the last time whether or not the Elks' Club actually had or was willing to allow parking on that side. Like they did modify their original plan and they said that this is what we would give up. And so I have concerns, I don't have children in the sergeant area, but these kids in this district while I serve here are my responsibility. So I'm going to act on all of them, those that are coming and those that are there now. So is there a possibility that there's parking can be made available on the Elk's side and not even?
Not really, because we're putting, if we decide to go with the Elk's Club property, we're putting the building in their parking lot, so we're not taking up their beautiful entrance to their building. So we're taking some of their parking, that's why there would be, need to be extra parking for both places to have sufficient parking if two things are going on in both buildings. There's no room for any other parking there.
So, I have a question. At the last presentation, the impression that I got was that the sites, that there had been 17 sites that had been narrowed down to the Elk's and the Sergeant property, that this was the most desirable in terms of all of the sites that had been looked at. So in asking us to consider, it felt a little bit more final, that's one thing I would say, just for you to consider in how you explain this to the community. And then the other part was, among the many concerns that we did address that night, one of them was related to had anyone watched drop-off at Sergeant? And watched how the cars flowed through and what that would look at like? Not just in terms of a parking lot or an event, but a fire. A car pulling out onto, a truck pulling out onto 9D, just wrongly timed with walkers and people doing drop-off and then the regular rush hour traffic. It is a bit of a bottleneck there. So I know that a traffic study can't be done until, you know, a property is in process of being developed. But I think that, you know, in terms of familiarizing yourselves with the site and what the concerns might be, I think that was one of the main issues that was raised as well.
And I think they will take that in consideration, but as you know now, where our three firehouses are, it's really congested coming out on South Avenue with a school right down the road and hardly anywhere to walk on a narrow road. The other one comes out on East Main Street, which if anybody's familiar with that, where they come out, your forceful school kids are walking up Liberty Street to the school. And the third one is on Masonic Ladder, where they come out, they got to come out and go down Main Street either way, wherever to go, which is tight. So, you know, they will take that in consideration. I'm sure the experts that we use will take that. But what they do notice is that some of your parents drop off their kids in the Elk's Club parking lot and our crossing guard walks you across the street. This will put a parking lot on your side of the road for them to be dropped off.
So they have watched, they have watched.
Well, yeah, you know, they got an idea of how much traffic. We got traffic counts that are on Walkout Avenue. We know the peak time and everything and they'll take that into consideration. But like I said, I don't want to rush you to make the decision. I want you to ask the questions you need to ask. And if we can answer them and you feel comfortable, then we appreciate if you give us the opportunity to do it. If we can't answer and you don't feel comfortable, we understand.
How does that timing impact the grant? Because one of the things that was presented to us, the two times that this was presented before, was that there was a sense of urgency around a grant, so.
Well, we have a grant and, you know, there's a timeline on the grant, but if we're delayed, because like I said, the grant is to do the study, pick a site, that's all the grant was to do. Now, once we know where the site is, whatever the money is that it costs to buy the site or buy whatever we need to buy, then the city council is going to have to decide, do we have the money, do we got to bond the money, and do we want to do that at this time? So the grant was only to do the study, come back with a site and make the recommendations to the council. So, you know, like I said, we're looking at a couple other sites. They're trying to get some input from them people right now. So, you know, there's some time, it's not like I need the answer tonight. I think you voted the same night they were here almost, right?
I could only speak for myself, I was under the impression that there was a sense of urgency.
That's why I'm letting you know that that's not what I'm expecting tonight, a vote yes or no. I'd like you to take up and consider it and whenever you decide, let us know. But if you have questions, let us know the questions so we can get you answers.
Great. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, I think the city holds the pen right now in terms of the design. I think the design that was presented before weren't the greatest. So, and we are getting concerns by email, we are getting concerns from parents. And I'd like to first ask if I can just turn over those emails to the city so they can maybe look at them and figure out whether they can address them or not. And then ask the city whether we can hand over what you've given us to the public, because the public is demanding to know what you've given us.
So, yeah, well, the only thing I would say you can give over to the public is what I'm asking for tonight, the parking lot on your side, because we're taking off the firehouse on your property. So you're not discussing, or you're going to allow me to put the firehouse on your property? You're, I'm asking you, will you let me put a parking lot on your property?
Okay, so the option of the firehouse on Sergeant is off the table?
Off the table.
Okay.
That's what I'm here to tell you. And I'm asking you to reconsider the parking.
Okay. I mean, if you, Mayor, if you'd be so kind, if you could leave us the drawing and scan it?
We got one for everybody.
And then we can send it to the public, I'm sure they want to know what that looks like.
Yeah, because, you know, I read on Facebook, we're putting a parking lot on both sides and a firehouse. I don't think the public got the true thing, what we're really asking for. So I'm telling you tonight what we're asking for, parking lot on one side. This is a sketch. This can be changed to accommodate whatever we think we need to accommodate. This is only a sketch, this ain't cut in concrete, this is the way it'll look. This is what they came up with to give you an idea. This was the original one that showed parking lot on both sides of your entranceway, which don't make any sense, since they talked, they came up with this one. So they did hear you, I want you to know that and they came back. Okay, do you, there you go. Thank you for your time, I know you've got a long meeting.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Great, so my question to the president is, can I hand over emails to the mayor?
Emails are available, I don't think that you could just literally just hand over emails, so.
Could we, should we develop a list of, a list of the concerns? Because.
I think, can I just, a question? If you do get emails, why don't you email back to the people? If you do get emails, why don't you email back to the people, just tell them if they would like to send us their email? That way, you're not handing over the email, if you just forward it to us, if they want us to have it. And I don't see any reason they wouldn't want us to hear their complaints.
Right.
So that's Mayor Rizzi, Don Beacon, Don Dow?
Oh, City of Beacon, yeah.
It's Mayor, it's Mayor at C Beacon, I don't know.
I'm not afraid of that.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, any motion to adjourn to executive session?
Motion to adjourn to executive session to review the point of history of particular individuals to discuss management exempt by federal law with regard to student matters and to seek legal advice from the school attorney and board will return soon as possible.
So, we are leaving at seven fifty, we're trying to get back in a forty-minute timeframe, um, we'll be close to that, that we'll be turning back. I do apologize that we had the workshop and then executive session, we do try and have the executive session first, but we wanted the kids to present and not be here too late, so we did adjust it. So we're only five minutes late this time, so we're definitely making improvement with time management. Um, there are some adjustments to the agenda, the first adjustment is on eleven point oh four A, it's the date change, so the date that was on the agenda previously was six thirty seventeen, and now it is changed to seven one two thousand seventeen. Another adjustment is eleven point oh four C two, and that's a date change as well. And then we have two items being added to the agenda, addendum twelve point oh one, and then twelve point oh two. All right, so the first part, the student and school presentations, the student and school presentations include staff employees, teachers, CCA, and all the bargaining units that come up during this time as well. Dylan?
All right. Good evening. Um, I'd like to let you know some of the exciting events that we have coming up at JB Forestill on behalf of the PTSO. On February twenty-fourth, we're having our annual family sweetheart dance, volunteers are always needed. On March tenth, we'd like to invite the community to join us as we travel around the world with the Animal Embassy. Um, it's this program, they bring in live animals, and they teach caring and compassion with the animals, so, uh, tickets will be available soon, it'll be ten dollars per family. Um, we have several literacy events planned for this spring. Local author and illustrator Deb Lucky will hold a graphic novel workshop for all of the fifth graders, and the story crafters will be back again this year to do an interactive folktales presentation for the students. Uh, we're having a scholastic book fair in school on March fifteenth to seventeenth. And our spring fundraiser with Gertrude Hop chocolates will be starting soon. Contact the PTSO if you'd like to place an order, don't have a child at JBF, chocolates are very good. Um, the money is being raised to go towards new playground improvements, uh, in the spring, including hopefully a new climbing structure. And finally, JBF now has a school pantry, um, offering grocery staples and personal care items, parents can ask their child's teacher for more information. Um, as always, follow us on Facebook, or email us at jvfptsou@gmail.com. Thank you.
Do I have a question? Yeah, good. Can I ask? But can you just explain the genesis of the pantry?
Oh, it was, um, started by the school, but the PTSO is helping to fund it, and it's basically just, you know, items are gonna be available for families, uh, for Forestill families, and, uh, you know, they can come in and discreetly get those items.
So they ask, they a teacher or a social worker, or...
Yeah, so the parents, uh, can talk to their child's teacher, but it's through the social worker, basically, at the school.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other student and school presentations? Seeing none, I'm gonna go to parent groups, any parent groups? Seeing none, I'm gonna go to open to the public, we have Ms. Jones, she signed up. I just wanna give a reminder, open to the public is a three-minute session, we are reviewing policies, but right now it's a three-minute session. Oh, we did change it to four minutes. I'm glad you told the timekeeper.
Hi, good evening, um, my name is Sharonne Jones, and, um, these are, one of them is my daughter, and the other one is, um, a daughter of another parent, we are representing New Covenant Learning Center, and this is regarding, um, last month, um, about the transportation. Um, we still haven't heard anything back from anybody, um, it still continues to go on, um, um, her parent spoke after me in regards to the transportation, and still picking them up at the corner and things like that, um, she still is not getting to school on time, so I am continuing to still bus her, I mean, bus her, but, transport her. Um, we was informed that we supposed to get a letter, or a call, or an email, and we haven't gotten anything, um, nor has the actual school, New Covenant Learning Center heard anything, um, since that last, uh, meeting, so we just, I don't know what's the follow-up, or what's the next step.
So Ms. Jones, I did have a conversation with transportation supervisor, so two different issues, so I'll start with yours, and then I'll start with the bus stop, because the bus stop's a little bit more complicated. Um, we, I, when I spoke to the garage, there was no, I wasn't sure how frequently you put your daughter on the bus, was it the very beginning of the year, and then it was an issue, and then you've been driving her since, is that what I understand? Okay.
Yeah, it started in the month, so when it first started, I gave you some time, because I know there's adjustment period in the beginning of September.
Right.
Um, but after that, I'm thinking by, at least by October, you would've been some, some consistency, and it was still coming at eight thirteen, and, you know, and then by the time they would do a detour, and they would do a lot of stops, and then they would get, um, they wouldn't get to the school until after eight thirty, and school starts at eight thirty.
So, I, I did speak to, um, this transportation supervisor about both issues, and again, I can reach out to your friends, because that's a little bit different. Um, but I will reach out to Ms. Kelly, because it's a little more complicated, I think we're gonna have to do a little bit of changing around of times and stops, so I did speak to Mr. Mackey, I do apologize that, you know, I don't know if it's communication, that he thought I was gonna get back to you, or he was gonna get back to you, and there was some, you know, weather delays, but I promise that we will get back to you, um, if not tomorrow, on Monday. But we'll reach out to Ms. Kelly, because I believe that this is more than just your child, that I'm imagining that it's, it's a lot, so I wanna find out the children that it's impacting, because it may not just be one bus run, and we'll work with her, um, so I'll reach out to her first tomorrow, Ms. Kelly, and then we'll work from there. But we will get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? Thanks.
Any other comments? Speakers?
Hi, good evening, um, my name's Anna Sullivan, and I'm a parent of a first grader at Sergeant. I just wanted to say, well, two things, uh, first, a very heartfelt thank you to the school, and for all the work that you've done in terms of the search for superintendent. We are so excited by what we're reading today, and, um, you know, all of the steps that you've taken to listen to the community, and I feel like this is, um, a really bright new chapter in Beacon's, um, story. Uh, the other thing I just wanted to comment on was the fact that the, uh, the robocall system, um, doesn't work properly. Um, been in touch with Ms. Corerani this, was it this week, last week, last week, I think there was a, what was the speech? There was, um, a, a school delay, um, one that, that wasn't, um, obvious when you looked out of the window. Um, my husband and I have both signed up for the school elects through the phone system, and neither of us received, um, the call. I ended up taking my son to school to find the doors shuttered, um, I missed a really crucial business meeting, we actually lost a lot of business that day, my company did, and I was the one to hold responsible. But that aside, if there were a true emergency, um, offered, there were a lockdown, and I need to know, um, the robocall system does not work properly, and I want you all to know that, and we can get it, please. Thank you.
Thank you, and we will definitely check it out. Do you know about it, or...
I do know about it, um, I don't, I don't believe it's a system, or I think it's specific to you, so I can work with you, what we've exchanged...
It's not specific.
The Corers, the city did not get the message, and I'm contacting my, uh, school secretary, my contact information hasn't changed in six years, and she said that we're clearly enrolled in the power, one of its whole power school, so, and I know many other parents who did not get the whole update.
All right. Any other comments? Speakers?
Good evening, Deborah Divinivas. Um, a few weeks ago, we had the first meeting of our music booster club, and I, I, uh, I know other people who are more in charge of it will be talking about that in the future. I just wanted to give a big thank you to our music teachers, seven of whom, which might be all of our music teachers, I'm not sure, came out at seven at night after a full day of teaching, to sit with us and give us feedback, uh, that's a hard thing to do, and I really appreciated all of them coming out to be with us. I am concerned, um, that our district might not be giving our music department the support that they need. I know that, for instance, my son who plays the trombone, yay trombone, um, he tells me how dented the instruments are around him, and I'm, I'm wondering how, I'm wondering if you can share with us a little bit about how the budget is developed for a department like the music department, um, and just, uh, you know, how, as we're moving into budget season, I just wanted to ask that, and mostly to share my appreciation for our music teachers.
Thank you.
I know that we, um, Mrs. Romley and I have both, um, Mrs. Romley has met with Ms. Beakley, who's the music coordinator, I mean, I'm sure she was at the meet, I'm sure she was at the meeting as well. Um, so there, there is money available, she is working on doing an inventory of the instruments, and we're waiting really for her leave on, on what she needs. There's also money available that's been earmarked by the Arts and Ed Foundation that was donated for instruments specific to the needs of the music department, so, um, she knows it's there, Ms. Beakley is very detailed and wants to be able to use the money, um, and the music department has an allotment for equipment for, um, contractual services and materials and supplies every year. So there is money available, and I also go to her to ask, you know, what her needs are. So I think it's a matter of trying to determine what we have, trying to access instruments that may not be usable at the moment, and actually purchasing new instruments. Okay.
Any other comments?
Hello, my name's Brad Smith, and I'm a parent of two future Forestill students here at Beacon and this is, and, um, I actually just wanted to come up today to thank everyone on the board, uh, for all of their hard work in superintendent search, and to express how excited I am, and I know that a lot of parents in the community are, to, um, to be looking at, uh, at what we hope is, uh, a very bright future, uh, in terms of, of strong leadership that reaches out to parent groups, and is really willing to partner with groups in the city to make our schools the best they can possibly be, and I wanna thank you all for your enormous work in this effort. I think, um, the candidate that we have here today shows, uh, just how hard you worked, and, um, I really appreciate it. I will say, though, that I hope it is the last search that the district ever does, that doesn't have a parent on the committee. I think that's a goal that we can all strive for. I know the reasons why it had to be this way this time, and I appreciate that reason, but, uh, the first thing my wife turned to me and said was, wait, you mean we don't have a forum to meet the candidates? And I said, well, there are reasons why it had to be this way, but I hope in the future that no upper-level district administrator has not a parent from the PTO selected who, um, is there, is there on behalf of parents. Um, so that's serious. Um, and I also wanted to say, with just a little time remaining, that the new city proposal, um, it, we've, I, I just hope that, that you do seriously consider that the city is asking you to place a parking lot on, on school property for overflow parking for the Elks Club. And although I, I recognize that that helps to deal with the Elks Club, I really hope that you, as a board, consider all of the options that you would've used this land for, potentially in the future, all of the things that, um, go into what this land costs, and what you'd be compensated for from the city, and whether an overflow parking lot for the Elks Club is really worth, because I think in referendum time, the answer to that question is gonna be pretty overwhelmingly no. Um, I hope it doesn't get to that referendum point. So I hope you seriously consider all of the, the financial implications that go along with this. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I'm just gonna talk a little bit about your last comments about the firehouse, and I am opponent of bringing it to referendum, because I wanna give the voice to the people, and not just how it'd be the nine people deciding. So I've been hearing, um, you and some other people come up saying that we want more involvement, which you wanted involvement, I'm a parent that was on the committee for a superintendent, um, search, so there were parents, I think a lot of us are parents. Um, but yes, I understand, and we do want to have parents involved in the decision on committees, especially for upper-level administration, and building-level administration especially, as well, for both of them. Um, so that's the goal, I think, that we have in common. I just think that, um, you're proceeding it for overflow for the Elks Club, but I think that if it went to referendum, it gives the people, the old people, a voice, and not just the nine people up here, which I've been hearing from parents and so forth, that they want more of a voice, they want it. So this is our time that it could go back to you guys, so... Any other comments?
Good evening, I'm Karen Garina, I am a longtime spectator, first-time speaker, and I work in the district office, I am a taxpayer, and I am president of the Beacon Association of Office Personnel. I, too, would like to echo the sentiments of earlier to thank you all for the job that you did. I know that it's a thankless job that you all do, and you volunteer your time, and I know a lot of hard work went into the search. The officers of the unions were able to have a private sit-down meeting with our new superintendent, if I can say that, and really came, walked away from that meeting with very positive feelings. We thank you, we are looking forward, not backward, and we look forward to turning the page and having a fantastic new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Good evening, Rebecca Corellas, parent and taxpayer. Yes, thank you so much to our Board of Education for the exhaustive search that brought us our new superintendent, we are very, very thankful. Um, I apologize, I did not have a chance to email my, um, topic to you ahead of time, so I'm just throwing it out there to you. Um, but I know that at this time of year, um, people are talking about, uh, school, school leadership's, uh, working on schedules, working on budgets, uh, for next year, and, um, we are very, very, um, I'm very, very proud that we were able to have our first meeting of Beacon Advocates for Music, like Jen said, BAM, uh, and we're trying to get ourselves together. Um, we, um, have talked about this issue before, there are two issues that I wanna bring up, that I have brought up before in the past. Uh, one of them is the elementary band position, I know that this has been, um, talked about over the last couple of years. We once had a full-time elementary band teacher in the elementary schools. Um, at some point, that position was taken away, then it was brought back, I understand, and then it was taken away again. Um, I believe we are now seeing, I have a high school learning band, and I have a middle school learning band, I believe we're now seeing some of the effects of the elimination of that position. The, the level of music that is being performed now, uh, is, is lower than it used to be. I think that we have a bit, well, I know that, we have a very low enrollment at the band at the high school. Um, we need to change this, this is one of the things that... This is one of the things that Beacon advocates are working hard to do, of course, and advocate for all instruction. But I really would like to put that out there once again to the leadership of this district for us to seriously consider reinstating the elementary band position in the school district and to have the music teachers teaching in their areas of strength. They are certified K-12 in all areas, vocal instrumental, choral, and all of that, but they have their areas of strength. It doesn't make sense for a band teacher to teach chorus if, you know, it's not their area of strength, for example. So I would like that to be looked at again, and the consistency of music instruction among all of the elementary schools. I believe, and I don't have fact sheets in front of me, but I do believe that it is inconsistent. I believe that students in the different elementary school buildings are receiving inconsistent levels of music instruction. And I would like that looked into, and I would like that seen to, because every child in the district deserves to have equal opportunity for music instruction, for all instruction, for art instruction, for all instruction. But of course, I'm talking about music because that's my thing. So those are the two big issues that I would urge you to please look at seriously again. Elementary band position and consistency in the elementary and music instruction. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, Seena, let's go to the interim superintendent report.
So first, I'd like to thank again Ms. Wagi and Ms. Evelyn and students from Forestville. So I think that with all that's been going on, we've kind of gotten away from bringing our children to the board meetings. And I, I, I for one have missed that. I think that it's important for the board and the community to see all of the good things that are going on in the district. So as much as we can, we will bring them here to kind of show, show off all the good things that are going on. The only other thing I wanted to just briefly talk about is two hours, is the weather. So again, I, I know that there's been a lot of confusion. I've gotten some emails from some parents. I will address the robocall. I know that that's an issue. But I have gotten some emails from parents about two hour delays or canceling after school activities or early dismissal, although we haven't had one, and that's something that we don't really want to do. So I will tell you that the transportation supervisor is up at three o'clock in the morning, trying to determine what needs to happen for our children, for the safety of our children. And we are looking at more than one weather forecast, but as you know, with the weather, it's very difficult to determine. So we're doing our best in that. Mr. Mackey calls me either at four or four thirty or five o'clock in the morning to try to make a decision. And it, it's a tough decision. And what happens is that sometimes the weather is not good and we delay, and sometimes the weather is better than we anticipated and we're delaying. So I know it's confusing for parents, and, and I know that sometimes it doesn't have a rhyme or reason from your standpoint. But if there's any possibility that the weather will not be good, I will always err on the side of caution. So if, if it's going to be a two hour delay, it will, I will call a two hour delay. I don't want to put a child on a bus. You have to realize also that a majority of our school buses are out of district, so we have a lot of private parochial students that go out of district. We have special education students that go out of district. So I don't know what all the weather conditions are outside the district. So I'm going to, again, err on the side of caution. I, I don't want to have to have a conversation with a parent if, God forbid, there's an accident. I would rather come in two hours late and just make sure. After school activities, the same way, we just did that on Monday. We, we canceled the board meeting, and actually didn't look bad when we did it, but to be honest with you, at six, six thirty, seven o'clock, it was sleeting. And I was glad that, that that was a decision that was made, because again, I don't want anyone to be in an accident because they're coming to any kind of related event here in, in the district. So, so know that we are up, we are looking, it's not an arbitrary decision. The other part is if all the other districts in the, in the county are calling a two hour delay, our bus system is a three tier system. We do high school, middle school, elementary for the nine or 10 buses that are in district. The others are at a district and then they come back and do elementary. So if the other districts delay and we don't, then, then it's extremely cumbersome to actually do all of that, to actually work it. So if all the other school districts in the county are calling two hour delay and the weather's questionable, we'll call two hour delay also. It, it's too difficult to manage. We can't possibly get all the kids to the school at the same time. So those are a lot of considerations, a little bit information. You know, I, I understand people have to go to work, and I, I understand that, and I'm sure the board understands that, and all of us at central office do, because we've all had to deal with that at some time. But, but know that the safety of the children are first, and I wanted to just say that publicly. Thank you.
Board comments and committee reports. Craig.
Well, I know that Michael will be talking about the facilities and operations committee, which met for the second time this past week. Very interesting, and maybe he should talk first.
Don't steal the thunder. Go ahead. He'll give an update on the F and L.
I'll fill in, so if you want to.
Okay, fine. I thought that maybe we had a little more timeframe in here. Michael gave you some of the checkpoints on the calendar, but it occurred to me that at this point, we should be telling the public more about what we're, what we're doing. It's very early stages. It's looking at another capital plan for the district that would be fairly comprehensive, affecting many, if not all, of our buildings. And we've had many of these in the past, and we try to stay up to date on it so that we protect our investment. A lot of it is kind of boring, where it's fixing a roof, replacing some doors, mechanical work and so on. There's always changes in the codes that you have to keep up with. And there's, of course, the opportunity for improvements that might make life better and different to students, which ranges from making sure that the boiler doesn't die to maybe doing something that's new and different and that increases our capabilities. So I think the time is, is right to call for people to begin thinking about what we have with our physical facilities. Santa Claus is not part of our funding plan. It's, it's something in the range of sixty-six point seven percent state aid for renovations, if I have that right. And maybe different numbers if you're talking about any kind of additions. But the rest of it fits into our, our tax base and our tax levy. The attempt is being made to levelize it so that we're not seeing any kind of a big spike. It depends on the timing. And I just want to suggest to people that this might be a good time to work through your systems, whether it's your, your building principles, or you just want to point something out to the board where you think there could be improvements or upgrades. Because at this point, we're thinking about it. So I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. Kristen?
So just give me a clip sheet on the wellness committee, so I was just confirming.
Go for it. You can always defer and say, oh, I can give updates to say.
Yes, I actually knew that part. I just wanted to confirm the date. So the wellness committee, our last meeting, we tabled the policy discussion because there's certain parts of it that relate to curriculum and to some decisions that we need, we need to decide on an administrative level. Our, the primary purpose of the meeting was about planning the family fitness night, which was a big success last year. It was at a high school. They were trying to bring in a lot of the similar activities, but also there was a lot of discussion about just making it flow better and, and making it sort of work better this year. So if that'll, there'll be more notification about that soon. It looks like it's going to be a really exciting night.
So the last wellness meeting was on the 12th?
Yes.
And when's the next one?
I actually don't know the answer to that.
Oh, look. The fitness night is on March 3rd.
March 3rd, yeah.
From six to eight, because we're all elementary schools.
Did you have any other comments?
Well, I did want to, I did want to address the new covenant communication. I think what I understood last time is there, there is the issue of getting back to them, but then I think there was also a tone which they thought that they received. It sounded like there was some indifference on the part of transportation, and I, I'd like that to be examined.
Okay, I don't think, well, when I spoke to Mr. Mackey, it wasn't indifference, it was, he wasn't aware of it. So I, I will definitely, Ms. Kelly is in the audience, so she's going to hear me say it, but I am going to reach out to her about which students are being affected by that.
Oh, I was, I was specifically talking about how the parent who called was treated when they called. That's what they bothered last time.
You mean the, the other parent that wasn't here this evening?
Yes, the, the tone with which she was addressed and her concerns were responded here.
Okay.
Anthony?
Comments, Stu, or just committee reports?
Comments, committee reports first, probably.
Yeah, I don't have any committee reports yet because, A, the diversity committee doesn't meet until February 6th, and the technology committee doesn't meet until February 7th.
What time for the diversity committee?
Eight fifteen PM. It's right after the policy committee in the school district building.
Okay. And then you said the next one as well?
And the technology committee is, which is the schools committee, is.
Okay. Any updates from the technology or no?
No, I give my update.
Do you know when the next one is, or the 7th?
Yeah, 7th, four p.m.
Got it.
So, and then I, I'm with Craig and Mike and yourself with the, on the facilities and operations committee. And since I sit on the technology committee, I think we talked about exchanging ideas among the committees, and I do like that idea. It's, it does prevent kind of like a slight little effect that sometimes happens in large institutions. The, I did get a, I did get a parent to contact me about the January 10th, canceling their after school activities thirty minutes before the high school ends. I mean, I'm sure you know about that. I'm not doing anything about that, I'm just passing the word along. I have, the untired project, I did see when it was at Rhinebeck, but I love this event. There were shortage of creative arts, and there were a lot of discussions during that event that were very, felt very meaningful, very insightful, that it was a wonderful project. I also saw some students from the National Art Society at the Dutchess Junction Fire Department's roast beef dinner, so I was pleased about that. I'm also very proud of the students who participated, who practiced their civic engagement skills for the Women's March at various locations, including Poughkeepsie, Beacon, New York City, and Washington DC. Beacon is well representative among, especially among the children. Also wanted to advise the committee and fellow board members that Albany has begun early this month in forming their budget, which typically goes out to public in draft in March. So I wanted to communicate that, that this is the best time to contact your assembly person or your state senator, how you feel about funding the foundation aid, gap elimination, et cetera. Going to the comments on the music, you know, I did note in the proposed budget for 2014, 2015, you know, there were music positions that were cut, which included the, the elementary band position. So it's, the general sentiment is that it just, while it was eliminated back then for a certain reason, it just hasn't been back. It hasn't, the, what, the need is still there. So I did, I do thank the, Anne Marie for putting the schedule for the budget, for the workshops. I'm optimistic, we, you know, we'll meet, we'll go through all the workshops and be there to do one of those. I am still waiting for the diversity report. You said that we would get it in time for the committee.
I'll give it to you, I have it.
Okay.
I'll give it to you for the diversity committee.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yep.
The, I asked a question before about the comprehensive plan, so that the, the various elementary schools can have, like, lab labs. You said you look into that at the last meeting.
That will be all part of the budget process and the elementary music teacher, the staffing, that's all part of the budget process that we're going to do with the principals. So that will be more to come.
Okay.
That's why I didn't comment, because I, we haven't completed that yet. We're, we're almost there.
Fair enough. I mean, as, as I reported in the technology committee, you know, they, they, it was reported that they have the funds for the lab labs, they just need the comprehensive plan. So that's what came out of, that's what came out of my report last time.
Okay.
The community education, who's who in the district that Kristen marked on, you know, I still fully support it. I, I thought we were going to get the feedback from the administration by tonight's meeting.
We had to do a little work to it. So it's almost there.
Okay.
We have a couple of things that we just wanted to tweak a little bit.
Will be ready by the next board meeting?
I'm imagining it will, yes. I want to make sure, if it goes out and goes on the website, I want to make sure it's a hundred percent correct.
Well, I think that the board is just, I think the board is just looking to see what the adjustments are, so then, then it doesn't have to go out before the next board meeting. I think that we just wanted to see it before it happened.
Okay, we can share it.
And I, I think we were also just waiting for the timeframe, the acceptable timeframe for response. Yeah, so there's two pieces to it. There were some errors in terms of some titles and chains, so those are the things that we're working on and getting corrected, so it's all aligned.
Great.
And then, again, I talked about, I mentioned this last time, and I think the protocol's still, anti-correct me if I'm wrong, if a board member can't meet one of the committees, they contact you. Either you submit or you find somebody to submit, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Example, was Meredith going to make it on the 24th?
I can't make it on Monday. Actually, I was going to ask.
And then what happened was, I, we asked Kristen to sit in on it.
Yeah. Present.
Right. Well, yes, that is.
But it still might, so.
All right.
That's all my comments, thanks.
All right, thank you. Mike, just a side note, next time we have Facilities and Grounds Committee meeting, I'll let you go first, so no one steals your time there.
So for Facilities and Operations Committee, like we said, we met yesterday, and the next meeting is February 8th at seven thirty at the district office. So, so if people want to come, we try to make it an hour and a half, but sometimes it goes over. So, so big picture, what this really means, and Craig alluded to our capital projects. We call it a, you know, capital plan that we're, we're developing right now, and, and this is going to go through the approval process to start work in the summer of 2019. So, so if we're talking about capital improvements or expansions or ideas, we're not looking at what we can do this year or even what we can do next year. It's, it's a long, it's a, it's a long planning time. I want to give that horizon so people think, start thinking about these ideas. We can't, if we want to grow and we have a vision where we have curriculum changes or things that need capital, buildings, improvements, changes, we need to be thinking far out in advance. So for example, for the, for the 2019 work to start, we're going to develop a capital plan by June of this year. Okay? And then we're going to communicate it and discuss with the, the public for a vote in December of this year. So that's the schedule, because then we have to go through state reviews and approvals and project development and all that in order to get the contracts in place to actually do the work in the, starting in the summer of 2019. After that one, the next one is potentially to do work in the summer of 2022. Okay? So that's kind of like the two big projects as we look on our horizon. So, and, and you can't, we can't just build a building, you know, we have to then think of in the budget, the, the people, the staff that are going to staff it, the equipment to house it and all that. So it's, so it's, it's not just, oh, we're going to, we're going to build a new building or we're going to do something. So we've really got to feed it to the whole budget process. So, so as the different community, curriculum committees, the, the principals and their, start developing their budgets, they should also be thinking, what capital projects do I need in 2019 or 20 or 21, 22? Because without getting into that list, again, it's not going to happen. So we may think, well, I, I have an, I have an idea, I have a plan, but we can never get things off the ground. Well, we have to be thinking, not next year, we're way out. Okay? So I'm trying to stress that in order to get people's brains, you know, thinking about the future envision and, and what it takes in order to build a foundation to do that. So.
Can I just add something to that, Mike? So at the Facilities and Operations Committee last night, we had our financial advisor there, as well as the architects from Rhinebeck Architect Group that we've worked with in the past. So what Mike is describing is what the financial advisor went over with the committee and so forth. So I just wanted to think that, you know, we had people telling us and guiding us to the way.
Right. We, yeah, we definitely have a financial advisor, because it is complicated, even the state does reimburse quite a bit. There's, there's limits and thresholds and, and timing that goes along with it. So we have, it sounds like a big team from the financial front to keep us, so we don't see, you know, great changes in our, in our, in our budget for each year. So again, we're looking for, you know, feedback, really looking for the principals and for the committees to think and. to think and feedback your ideas, either up through the budget process to Emory. I would say if the public has ideas, that they can feed them to, you know, myself. You can get my email address on the website, copy in to me and Emory, so that we can at least collect them and get them on the list. Because if they're not on the list, even though, you know, we may say, hey, this belongs over here, or we're not going to do this yet, we want the ideas to come out, because that's very important. And, and that's all I have.
Great. No comments?
I just want to say there's a policy committee on February 6th at seven o'clock at the district office. We are going to have our attorneys present at that policy committee meeting as we needed some guidance on a couple of table policies and plus how we're going to move forward in integrating into our new system. They said they would help direct and guide us. We've been moving along. However, they have an experience in the process, so they're going to make sure we're on the right path.
So can I just chime into that as well? So what we did was all the policies that we're going to be reviewing, we forwarded. Kelly was gracious enough to forward them to the attorneys and, and we're going to, so they previewed them earlier. So then, we're not wasting time reviewing them specifically at the meeting. We're going to be able to get their advice, and they're also going to try and roll out a plan for how we could facilitate changing over from our old policy provider to NISBA's, NISBA, and getting that changed sooner rather than later, because it's been tedious.
Yes, very tedious.
I didn't mean to.
No, 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 that's fine, but that, I mean, they are going to be guided us.
You're done?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Meredith?
I actually had a question about the policy manual online. When, so when that change occurs, will the, because right now, if you go to the policy manual, it's five hundred and fifty-four pages with no table contents at the beginning. So will, is the plan, when it switches over for a change, sort of by section and?
Yes. Right now, it's, yeah, right now, it's been really serious, because we've been trying to go from section to sections. And so right now, we're in 2000s, and it's, it's long, there's a lot. So we're trying to move along. There's some that we may be able to move along quicker. You know, my hope is like by June that we're, you know, as close to possible as having everything into our new policy. Because as we move along, we have more updates to make for policies, so then we're going back into policies and having to update them and revise them. So the, the policy committee will be getting a copy of what was said to our attorneys as well.
I have a question on the policy committee. So if we, if we laid out a milestone of full conversion by June, or wherever we pick, then would we have like a listing of, because there's going to be a lot of policies that have to come through here, right, for two, two readings, so we would have to divide, maybe we must be able to digest all that or go through.
We have been, we have been, like, we, we, there's some that maybe, that don't have as much changes to, that are pretty much, that we just are just accepting them. They're, they're similar to what we've had. There's no big major changes. So we can even ask for a waiver of a first reading if needed as well.
And that's one of the questions that we had for the attorneys, is can we do it by section once, so if it's not that drastic? But right now, we're dealing with the crossover and stuff, so that's where we need that guidance. The policy committee needs that guidance as to what can we do and how can we explain it in a sense to make sure they're updated, but yet do a thorough review to make sure they're relevant to what our needs are in the district.
I mean, if we got them like, you know, if we got a section, I'll block them like two weeks ahead of the reading, so we can, we can, you know, digest them instead of just the Friday before. It always welcome to come to the policy committee.
Right, exactly. But, you know, we have, I mean, we have been trying to do them in sections, and that's what I think they're going to be guiding us on.
I will support.
But, you know, it's not like the logic. We'll do it in an easy manner.
So you answered that question now?
Well, actually, I have, not to throw any monkey wrenches into the policy situation, but I, I recognize Mr. Smith's coming up and, and actually, my, if I have one regret about the superintendent search, it is that we only had board members on the committee. And I, I do hope that I am long gone from this board when we do the next search, but I would, you know, put action stone somewhere that it would be great to have union representatives and parent representatives in the future.
Can I just come out on that? I think that it would be great, because now that we set a process up, now we can build upon that process.
Exactly.
So this was a process that we went through, so now we could start, and it would be great to have the follow-up as, as a board, maybe through a workshop, to say, what adjustments to the process would we like to adjust for?
I think that would be great.
For future and make it a best practice and have it documented.
Exactly, I think that would be great, because in general, I feel very good about it. But I do recognize that as a weakness, and, and I apologize for that. It did, I also did some, I'm regularly looking at other school districts' websites. And one thing I felt, what I, what I think with the hiring process is we sort of have two questions going on, or maybe more than two, but one is, you know, what are the nuts and bolts of it? How is it happening, you know, the order of operations, et cetera? But then there's sort of a larger cultural issue going on that can apply to the hiring process or to many other parts of our district and the way our district works. And to me, that is a question of parent involvement, and I know there's one parent involvement policy. As far as I know, there's only the one. I know that many districts just have that one, but I, actually, I was guided to one that has many and actually says, and, you know, this is probably an extreme version, but, hang on, somewhere in here I have it, that specifically says, we will not have a parent, we will always have a parent to serve as a member of all interviewing teams used in the selection process for recommending persons to the superintendent for appointment as teachers and administrators. I, I read this because I had spoke to other board members during my NISBA training and, you know, mentioned that we were talking about this and what I felt about it, which that we should involve as much as possible. I mean, any book you open about a successful school district has a really active parent and extended community. So this is, this is an extreme, and, but I, I think it's an, it's an extreme that we should try to move toward. And I think it's through policy and not through protocol.
If you want to give that to Georgia or forward to Georgia, then she could, she could look at, cut policy.
So that's one thing. Another thing is that, actually, a question I had is, we have a board meeting during spring break, and I'm wondering if that's written in stone, because it's also the day of the budget adoption, and I feel like that's sort of not inviting parent involvement, because a lot of people are gone during that time. So I don't, I don't know if that could.
Can we look into it?
Yeah, that'd be great. Moving forward, I wanted to let everyone know that the Betsy DeVos vote for confirmation was postponed until January 31st, so you still have a chance to call all the senators in the country and pretend you live in their area. And actually, it's down, I think there's a short list, and I can put it on my Facebook page. But do a little Google search, there's lots of great YouTube videos about grizzly bears and things, if you're not, if you're undecided. There also, I want to, Anthony spoke a little bit about the budget, the state budget. I think, sorry, I was slightly distracted when you were talking, so I didn't hear everything you said.
Your positions keep learning.
Hopefully, I'm not repeating too much, but the governor's proposal is for a billion-dollar increase, but you should know that it falls short of the recommendations from the Board of Regents and the Educational Conference Board, which is a coalition of all the major education groups. The Regents called for an overall $2.1 billion increase in school funding, and the Education, Educational Conference Board estimates that $1.5 billion is necessary just to continue our current school services. So that's not good, and you should let Cuomo know how you feel about that. And then one of the most disturbing things about his post-budget is that he seeks to discontinue provisions of the formula for foundation aid. And currently, Beacon alone is owed $4 million, so it's basically kind of trying to erase this debt, and it's, it's really bad, in my opinion. So Sue Serena was a good person to call and let her know how you feel about that. There is also a hearing in Albany on February 14th. I'm going to try to attend. Greg? And I don't know exactly, it's, it's the education hearing for the budget. I'm not sure exactly what it entails.
They'll list, there are also another NISBA gathering.
Yeah.
On that same?
The, the. I'll just speak into the mic so people at home can hear.
The, the conference, the conference that's going to be had with the NISBA is the 13th and 14th, it's Sunday and Monday. I mentioned it the last meeting.
Yeah.
I think that's it.
Great. Kenny?
So I just want to say kudos to Team Falcon for their hard work and perseverance. I have no talent whatsoever in robots, cellphone technology. So when I, I'm always amazed at children and how solid they can be when you put something that they have no experience with in front of them and how well they do. I, I can't say enough how much I appreciate teachers and how they go above and beyond. Those things should always be commended, and I'm very grateful. When I get to see kids in this, in this building, when we have board meetings, I'm excited. I'm excited to see them learning. I'm excited to see them growing. I'm just excited, because I think this is one of the reasons that I sit here, is to assist and aid them and propel them forward. So when I get to actually see what they're doing in the buildings, I'm, I'm very pleased with that. I'm always, I'm excited when we are looking forward and not backward. I think Karen said it best. Prior to getting on the board, I was very concerned about the consistent turnover rate, and I think that we're making waves here. So I think with consistent leadership, we're going to be in a place to really put Beacon in a place where it really deserves to be. Recently, I attended a unity and a community event, and I just want to thank Councilman Ali for putting that all together. The night was really, it was well, it was a time well spent. There were several, I'm going to say olive branches from, it seemed to be strong roots in the community. People willing to just give up themselves to ensure that this community continues to grow and flourish at any means necessary. So that even provided mental health to, you know, learning how to grow your own vegetables. So I found it to be very enlightening, and I encourage more positive things throughout the community. I think the more that we uplift each other, the better we become as a community. When you start dragging people down, it lowers the morale. So again, I just want to thank Councilman Ali for that. I just want to know when the safety committee is going to meet?
I don't have, I don't have a date. We're working with the police department right now. I don't have a specific date where we're just going to come as a meeting. But we are working with the police department to get them involved.
So do you know when they met last year? Like, I was looking, and maybe I'm looking in the wrong place to see if we're, because we haven't met at all yet, so is that?
Right, we have, I don't, I don't have it on the top of my head. I really don't really retain it. I can get it to you. I can look back on my calendar. I don't have it.
Okay, and then the grow your own status, like, anything that has to do with the kids, I, I.
Grow your own was, was kind of put on hold, because the funding part and the person that was at Marist is no longer there.
I was serious, so she was working on that person, she had a connection, we were making some movement, and then I, like, I looked back in my notes and I was like going back and forth. So, do we not have a person? Do I call myself?
No, so now Dr. Sullivan, in the education department at Marist, and I have been, you know, kind of in connection and have had some meetings. And for one reason or another, our meeting times kind of get glitched. So he's not forgotten me, I've not forgotten him, but.
Like, if you need me to help, like, I could call. Like, I don't know how well that would help you, but I just don't like, it's a whole school year, right, so last year, these students had attended.
Yeah, I'm sorry. No, but no, there's some things on the college end that are really, in terms of formalizing a partnership agreement, that we need to be able to have as, as well. So there's a twofold keys to it, so.
Did it change from what the program had been?
The program last year started, but then it stopped. And so with it stopping, those students that spent their time, they invested their time in the program, there was really no outcome. So I, I get that where we have the disconnect, but the fact that we're into another school year and we still don't have a replacement program, like, that troubles me, because the students that actually participate in their program are students that deserve to have an outcome, and they don't have that. So that makes me not happy.
So Kenny, just so you know, some of the things, and there was not a partnership agreement when it originally came here, which kind of worried us, and we were, we want to make sure it was formal, so there was no commitment level at Marist. We really need to make sure that that happens, just for the protection of the district as well as the college. So we need to work on that, and the person, the contact person is doing her PhD and is no longer there. So Dr. Sullivan does have a full-time job there. So I, I mean, we will reach out again. Obviously, it's February, so I don't know if this will be something, again, we're putting things on a to-do list and a goal list to try to start, but we can take care of that.
And then Marathon Project, yeah?
Oh, I'm sorry, may I just be very specific? So what I want to make sure is protected for our students, that things that are promised to them, that will be the outcomes if they apply to the college, are actually the things that will be fulfilled when they get to be college applicants. And there isn't anything in writing, so I can appreciate the frustration, but for me, I want to protect that things that were described and promised are really outcomes. Because that's, that's where there seems to be a little bit of different levels of understanding. And again, the folks that were a part of all of that are not here on our end in district or at the college at their home. So we'll, we'll work towards that goal.
And the Marathon Project, we're all set, right?
Marathon Project, the representative from Cape will be in the middle school and the high school on the 13th of February to talk to students, and they are scheduling a meet and greet for the students and the mentors. I will say a lot of staff members have stood up and want to be mentors, so it's really exciting. So we're right on schedule to start in March, if the weather upholds, if not April. So we're on, we're on our way.
And then Navions will be included in the.
That's a, that's a budget process, and Ms. Orlando has emailed us specifically about a contacted Bosse's, which we appreciate as well.
And so my final thing has to do with the concerns for the students at New Covenant Learning Center. And so I just have to say that as a parent, we are now in January, and January is over, and these students have been placed at a disadvantage. They, they're not getting to school on time, so they're, they're not really allowed to be the students that they possibly can be. And so although one of the parents has adjusted her life to drop this student off, it is our obligation to get them to school and get them there on time. So the longer we take to address this matter, it places our students at risk. So if those students are within the district and they are entitled to busing, they, in my opinion, are entitled to busing, that is on-time busing or before-time busing, and they are entitled to communication with the bus garage that is conducive to ensuring that these students get what they deserve. So the fact that we're here in January, and this problem has existed since September, I'm, I'm not very happy about that. So it is my hope that this problem will be resolved by Friday. That's what I'm hoping.
I can promise Friday, but I can, I can, I will address it tomorrow with the bus crash.
It's Thursday, not Monday. I have no real board comments besides just commending the board members. We reached, we reached a milestone. We started a journey in August, and tonight is going to be concluding it. And you guys put a lot of work in, and it's something to be commended for. We navigated our way through it. I felt sometimes we were going over the Rocky Mountains. Other times, I thought we were in the Great Plains, but we reached the East Coast, and everything is, it's to be commended. It's, I don't think the public realizes the time and effort communicating with HYA, getting updates, the, the meetings that we went to and stuff. Closing a door tonight on this is going to open another door as to where we go with the vision and with the goals, and that's our next step. We knew that the number one thing that we had to do as a board was to get a permanent superintendent in place, and I feel that we've accomplished that with greatness. And now we just need to start opening our eyes and looking at the vision and looking at goals, so we can give the district leadership a better understanding and a pathway to go to. They've been holding it together without that vision and goals, and we need to give them that direction. So I think our next charge, we had a lot of charges since July, and our next charge is to get that vision and goals in place so we can give the district leadership a, a path to go to, saying, hey, this is what. Saying, hey, this is what we want, this is where we need to go. So doing the priority checklist, we, we can check a big one off, but I think we have to open the door to the next one. So I just wanna commend all of you for everything that you've done, you've made my life easier and I look forward for the next big task, so thank you. I don't think we have any unfinished business, but please correct me if I'm wrong, so.
We addressed it, we'll, we'll hear back after the communication.
Okay. So next is the consent agenda. So, um, the use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a settlement to cover those relative routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individual particular pieces of business on the consent agenda may do, may so indicate and that item will be considered and voted on separately. Thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. Is there anything that any board members want removed?
I had a question about Ms. Polages' note that the minutes have been circulated this afternoon, for which meeting was that?
So, don't, we don't ask questions yet, what, what pop, what number was it?
Eleven months, oh, mine's eleven.
I guess it was eleven point oh two.
Eleven point oh two.
I'm eleven point oh eight.
Kenyon as well?
Eleven point oh eight.
Eleven point oh eight. Anything else? Eleven point oh seven? Eleven point oh seven? Anything else? No one said eleven point oh four, are you saying eleven?
No, no, I'm not.
Alright, so I have eleven point oh two, eleven point oh eight, and eleven point oh seven.
The agenda is separate from.
Correct. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda minus eleven point oh two, eleven point oh eight, and eleven point oh seven.
Motion is stated.
Anthony, second?
Second.
Georgia? Comments, questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Roommates, students. Okay, see? Why are you saying please, why are you saying please? Just checking to make sure. Eleven point oh two.
They had me worried.
No, I.
I had to double-check, cause three people said something.
We were wrong, we were wrong, go ahead.
Eleven point oh two, I need a motion to approve eleven point oh two?
Motion to approve eleven point oh two.
A second?
Second.
Comments, questions?
So the question is, which meeting was it that the meeting minutes were just circulated this afternoon for? Is it, just, we talked about more than one meeting here, cause I didn't have a chance to read what was sent out this afternoon.
The following changes were made to the agenda, eleven point oh two minutes were attached.
Stated on the agenda, it's January ninth.
Eleven, for which day?
January ninth.
The last board meeting.
I'd like to table that until we have a chance to read it, if nobody has a problem with tabling it.
Anybody?
You know, I'm glad to see they're done, it's just, you know, I only noticed that just before it came to the meeting, so.
So you made a motion, everybody made a motion?
Table to the next meeting.
Craig made a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Meredith? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. So the minutes of the January ninth meeting, Kelly, can you put on for the next board meeting? Thank you. Eleven point oh eight, which is. I, I need a motion to accept.
Eleven oh seven, aren't you doing it in order?
No, I do it in the order that it was pulled.
Really?
You can punch me later.
I haven't changed that.
I never noticed it, so it is out of the protocol.
Eleven point oh eight, any motion to approve eleven point oh eight?
Motion to approve eleven point.
Georgia, a second?
Second.
Craig Wolf? Comments, questions?
It wasn't Craig, it was you. Apparently when Anthony and I.
I was throwing my voice over Craig's.
You harmonized.
I'm giving it to Anthony, cause Meredith questioned me too much.
No, I just wanted to say thank you for the hundred and forty-seven hours for the Thomas Wright Scholarship.
Great, all of them in favor on eleven point oh eight?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved with thanks. Eleven point oh seven, any motion to approve eleven point oh seven? Motion to approve eleven point oh seven, a second?
Second.
Kenyon, comments, questions?
Um, my question was on the treasurer's report, okay, it's page twenty-three.
So it's like a puzzle when.
I know, that's why, which is section twenty-one-ten, right, Alpha twenty-one-ten, it's page five to twelve on the bottom right?
Okay.
Okay, so, line item, Alpha twenty-one-ten dot one-sixty-one. Instructional salary assistance, we removed, we took out three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars from the state council, where did it go?
Wow!
When you state it like that, though, it makes, it doesn't have a positive.
Well.
Yeah, okay, so how, okay, so, so.
It seems like, well, let me ask you, so it seems like.
Ready? Here we go. Ready, I'm not a trained mics nuclear engineer and he's thought, he's trained to think in worst-case scenario. Oh, but we're positive, so I'm gonna spin it positively, okay? So twenty-one-ten, one-sixty-one, twenty-two-fifty, one-sixty-one are both budget codes for teaching assistants. So when we do the budget, the people that are sitting in the positions are how we carry forward their salary. But what happens is during the year, as we get, after the budget's approved and we do staffing and we decide how teaching assistants are being utilized, they may go between regular education and special ed. So that's the difference in there. So you're, in the budget transfers, if you wanted to backtrack and go, Sandy Martell, the treasurer, has all of the budget transfers attached here that you can actually go through. So you may not actually see that amount go from one to another, cause there's a couple of different variations. But in theory, that's where those two codes go, it's between twenty-two-fifty and twenty-one-ten, regular ed and special ed.
Okay, and I noticed the other piece of my question.
I asked the other question about teacher salaries, that was the other question you had asked me prior to the meeting.
Right, so I.
So twenty, twenty-one-ten, one-twenty, twenty-one-ten, one-thirty is elementary education teacher versus secondary teacher salaries. And again, in, in the budgeting process, so some of the special area teachers kinda move around, so their salaries would go back and forth. So it's an in and out in those two areas. Once you actually encumber people's salary and you start paying them, you realize that they were budgeted in a different code and you're gonna do the transfer to make sure it's whole.
Okay, thank you for that positive explanation.
See?
I did, and I did, and the other half of my question was, it looked like it was going down to the other twenty-two-fifty, one-sixty-one, so.
Right.
That's where it's.
And it might be dollar for dollar, but it would be in that, right?
And you usually see them pretty close to each other, but this one was, it was, it was in a different section, so I wanted to make sure.
Right, and, and as we get through the process, you'll learn a lot more about how we set, how we set for special ed versus regular ed and. Good, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Um, I need someone to, motion for twelve oh one, please read it if you make the motion.
Please go.
Sure.
Motion to approve settlement agreement and general, and general release. Be it resolved, the Board of Education hereby approves the separation agreement between the district and employee number five-two-three-four and authorizes the interim superintendent of schools to sign the agreement on the district's behalf.
Is there a second?
Second.
Kenyon? Comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried now. I need someone to make a motion for twelve point oh two.
Motion for twelve point oh two.
Christmas.
Can I read the whole thing?
Be it resolved, that the Board of Education hereby approves the employment contract between the district and Matthew Landau for him to serve as the district superintendent of schools for the period of July first, twenty-seventeen through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty.
Second.
Anthony jumped right on that. Comments, questions?
I have comments. Okay, so while we're here tonight to vote on the contract for our new superintendent, I believe that Dr. Landau represents those characteristics we all envisioned for the future of our district that were included in the leadership profile developed with input from all the district stakeholders. Unfortunately, though, the reality is that our history for keeping superintendents over the last ten years has been horrendous. So while I believe we will, that we will have a long relationship, if circumstances arise that neither the board nor Dr. Landau can possibly foresee at this point, I feel it's my responsibility to ensure there are protections in place for the district. This contract does not include a no-fault clause similar to what was included in the contract with Dr. Walkley, which clearly delineates the terms of separation in the event that out of no fault of either party, the relationship cannot continue. While it is acknowledged that this clause is not a standard term in superintendent contracts due to our unfortunate history, I believe it should be included in order to protect the district. I have a fiduciary duty to the taxpayers, I campaigned on, on this and intend to uphold this duty. So while I vote yes for Dr. Landau as a person, I'm gonna vote no for the contract.
Any other comments?
I think so, any comment? Well, I respect, like, very much and appreciate all the time and we really did, as a board, put in so much effort. And, you know, it's Beacon, so nothing would ever be completely smooth, so here, right, here we are. As I was reading that resolution, I felt my heart started to beat faster, because I feel like we're coming across the finish line, that is a massive milestone for us. I take my fiduciary responsibilities to this district as a trustee on this board very seriously. They come second only to the educational well-being and welfare of the kids of this district. I don't think they're mutually exclusive at all, but I do think that in terms of priorities, leadership and commitment and a sense of what good education looks like for all kids was what we really endeavored to achieve. And I know that I, um, I know that my kids are gonna be okay, because I can advocate for them. But I do feel like one of the most important things for me in this search was to find somebody who really knew how to bring opportunities to all kids. And Dr. Landau's first job out of college was as a Teach for America fellow in a really challenging school in Baltimore. And I, I knew that, he, he and I are around the same age, so people who were my peers when they graduated from college, I remember going to the Teach for America program and no one faulted them for leaving early or, you know, getting right over the finish line of their duty and getting out of there. And Dr. Landau stayed five years and really gave a lot of kids opportunities, I'm sure, that they never would have had otherwise. And he's done that over and over again. And I feel like Beacon is changing, there are lots of people moving in who can pay cash for their home. And, you know, who have lots of choices and opportunities. And they're going to enter the school district and they're gonna know how to advocate on behalf of their kids and they're gonna drown out voices that already had a hard time doing that. And what I feel so strongly about is his commitment, everywhere he's gone, he stayed a long time, the fact that he puts kids first and the fact that he's, will genuinely be an advocate for every kid in this school district.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I think I'd like to say a few things, this whole process began more than a year ago, it seems, when, uh, people began to think about how we're going to approach this. And there was discussion about methods we used in the past and the results that had been obtained. And it was suggested, and I was among those who did so, that we should engage a headhunter firm, some people weren't quite sure what that was. It means an executive search consultant, I think we were served well by our choice of consultant. They not only advertised the position, but they also reach out to people who they know are possibly good candidates. So I feel very validated in the way that this has worked out, watching the whole process. Forty-eight people at the beginning, we talked to five finalists, they were all pretty good. And I think that what we did was to find the best fit for our district at this time and for the foreseeable future. And I'm feeling good about it. I think Dr. Landau has a record of curriculum development, teacher development, turning around schools that are troubled and need help. He's patient, dedicated, the guy who sticks with the project until he gets it done. The people in Ithaca that we have spoken with speak quite highly of him, and sad to see him go. And I remember two of them made comments to the effect that you're, you're getting our best, getting one of the best people that we've worked with. I think that's a good recommendation. I think Ithaca, and I'm familiar with that city, is a good model for a place to find somebody. He is the deputy superintendent there, people said he is definitely ready to move up to the next step. And I'm looking forward to seeing how we proceed in this district now that we are in a position to make a change from kind of obsessing about what we do for our next superintendent, welcoming him to our district and watching him go to work. Our only regret is that we have to wait until July. But there is light at the end of the tunnel, Mrs. Porteroni. And I think that you'll be hearing from, from Matt from time to time as he gets familiar with what lies ahead. So with that, I'll say thank you, thank everybody's hard work.
Any other comments?
I had a comment, I, um, I was lucky enough to escort, with Anthony, we escorted Matt around the district last week. And I, I wanted to say, first, I was really proud of Beacon, I felt like, it was a sunny day, which always helps. But also the, the schools were shiny and the staff and teachers were so friendly and the students did an amazing job explaining what they were doing. And I felt that Beacon really shined and I felt really, once again, proud to be part of this, this city and this school district. I, we were supposed to go to Ithaca on Tuesday, but we got, I'm not sure if I should say, snowed out or rained out, but we weren't able to go. We ended up doing several conference calls for several hours with a lot of the staff, board president and superintendent from Ithaca. And, uh, and it was remarkable, I, I, people really, even people that disagreed with Matt couldn't say nice, enough nice things about him. He was, they mentioned he was collaborative, an artful manager, a good listener, big-picture thinker, genuinely interested in students' staff well-being, but can still set boundaries and make hard decisions. The thing that, uh, one of the things, one of the stories that Matt told us during the interview process that I, I hope this doesn't embarrass you, Matt, but I think it's important to think about, because we do, we have had a lot of turnover and, um, and, and I think the board has done a lot of work. We've come together a lot, more than I expected that we could. And now we come together to support the next leadership and that is gonna be the key to Matt's success. So here's the story, Matt says that sometimes, I've said that, I don't know if this still happens, yours. He, when he needs to think, he would walk in circles and outside. And there's a really nice traffic circle for you. But I hope that, I hope that we can accept Matt for all the wonderful things that he is and support him to be a leader of the great district that we have. So I'm, I'm very excited and grateful for everyone's time that they've put in and look forward to the future.
Thank you. Anthony?
Yes, I wanted to make a comment as well, I, I, I respect Mike's position. I understand that he's, he kind of agrees with us that we found the right person. We just, we have differences in how we, what is our fiduciary responsibility. I think the diversity of ideas is kinda what makes us better. I mean, there were many times when we were arguing with each other, even during this process, about how to proceed. And, you know, it did get kind of intense for a while, but we were all alive and, and we didn't each other, so.
There's the bar.
So, you know, and I, and I, and a lot, and sometimes I do carry some, some, some quantity of skepticism to try to keep an eye on and stuff, but in this process. But in this process, it was, um, it was grueling, but it was, um, it was fruitful. And I also wanted to, um, and the decision was not easy. But I think Matt came out on top. And I also wanted to thank the school district itself, all its employees and administrators who have been able to pull everything together and endure it through all the turnovers. And I, I hope that, um, this will be a step forward. Thank you.
Anybody else?
All right, well, I am very happy that tonight is coming to an end and that we found our candidate of choice. As I respect Mike's views, I think that having that clause in the contract, we want to get the candidate that fit the leadership profile that the district has, uh, has developed, that the stakeholders had developed. It's been quite clear that that was put into a, one contract. And speaking to many legal, um, firm, firms about it and many superintendents, no one would accept that except for a retired person or someone that is, uh, that isn't worth coming in. So it was added into a contract. Dr. Walkley was a retired, uh, person that came out of retirement to work here. And so, um, I really feel that, I don't know if we'd want a person and we would pick a person if they agreed to it because, well, characteristics are they showing that, you know, they would go forth with it. But I am happy and humbled that we are here tonight and I'm very excited as to what the future is gonna bring to Beacon. As I said before with the, with the board members, I think that we need to get that vision in line and the goals in line. So when we come, and I also don't want to be remiss without thanking Amory for the last year, has been holding the fort together. I can tell you that we have... We have not made it easy on her. As you could see just on the discussions that we have here, um, it, it hasn't been easy. But she, you know, when we have interim superintendents, the, the status quo is, is, is the norm. Let's maintain until we get that permanent person. And I can honestly say, um, since Amory has been sitting in that seat, the status quo hasn't been, um, the norm. She has been trying to improve. She's been trying to get things in line. So, uh, Matt or the, before we knew it was Matt, but the next superintendent would have a smooth transition and could start being proactive. So Amory, I just want to thank you for that.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Kate Thorne.
Dr. Landau. So no pressure, but business pressure is very important.
Sure.
Thank you. Just wanna get set up here. So I want to say thanks to the board. I am honored and humbled to be here tonight. I don't wanna come back to folks. They, uh, this has been a quite a long process and they have, at each step, kind of said, okay, this is the next test. And then a few days ago, it was the final test. But I, it seems to me that speaking to a group of people after twenty o'clock at night is the final test in the process. So I, I will not forget that for sure. So I just want to take a couple of minutes just to talk about myself. It's something that I, I don't do a lot of and I know in this process, these first few months, that that's, that's the most important thing I probably need to do. And while some of you are talking, it's, uh, it's always kind of hard to hear people, you know, say nice things about you, but it's, uh, it's, it was kind of words were shared, so thank you. So just a quick thumbnail sketch of my career. As, as it has been mentioned, I was a fourth and fifth grade teacher in Baltimore in the nineties for five years. After that, I went down to Charlottesville, Virginia to get my master's in administration and thought I was gonna go back into teaching and ended up becoming assistant principal in Charlottesville at an elementary school for two years. I switched school districts, I went to Albemarle County, which is the district that surrounds Charlottesville. And I was an elementary principal in two different buildings for eleven years. And during my time there, I worked with someone who, who ended up coming to Ithaca, Lou Bell Brown. And he's been the superintendent for the last six years. He just won superintendent of the year for New York. And I'm gonna let him know that I mentioned that. I get paid every time I say it. But, uh, but he, uh, he kind of lured me up to Ithaca and had a fantastic five years. During my, I'm in the midst of my fifth year. During my time, I started as the chief elementary officer for a brief kind of reorganization time. I was the chief academic officer. And then for the last two years, I've been the deputy superintendent. Things that have guided me for my leadership throughout my career are having trust as the foundation of everything that I do and that we do. I don't think you get anything accomplished without that. But one thing I've learned is talking about trust is kind of not worth a lot. Earning trust is what it's all about. And so earning trust happens through action and, and building relationships and listening and, and working together. Some other things that I think kind of highlight my leadership are a sense of humility. I have two people at home that keep me very humble. One is five years old. Uh, one person's five and I won't mention the age of the other person. But, uh, when I, you know, a week or two ago, we were kind of really getting my son in the zone of we're moving. And, uh, and so, you know, I first told him, well, you know, I'm gonna be the superintendent. Anthony really knows what that is, but, uh, and so he knows Lou Bell, uh, my boss right now. He said, Lou Bell's retiring? No, no. And Beacon, remember we went there, you know, back in, back in December? Uh, and so his, his first statement was, are you gonna be in charge of everybody? And I, you know, I kind of puffed up thinking, yeah, my son, you know, this is cool. Uh, and I was about to say yes, and then my wife's in the kitchen and she said, I think it's the other way around. And so, and, and so she only kind of nodded like, yeah, that's probably the way it's gonna be. So they keep me humble. The other thing that I will always aim to do is always focus on learning and always focus on young people, always. I think a lot of times administrators, we get lost in a lot of stuff. And the stuff is important, but we always need to bring it back to learning. We always need to bring it back to engaging our young people and empowering them every single day. So in thinking about ways to kind of explain who I am a little bit, I thought on the drive here of a few quotes that have meant a lot to me in my career. And then kind of sharing just a little bit of background about why those quotes are important. The first quote is, uh, nobody cares about how much you know until they know how much you care. And that's a, so, you know, I may have mixed up a word or two, but like, that's a very common quote in the education world. Right? You have to build relationships first. The reason that quote is important to me is my first year of teaching in Baltimore was, was very hard. I was different than everybody in my school and, and I was struggling with just about every aspect of the, of the teaching and learning process in my classroom. The neighbor teacher sort of next to me, after about a month of sort of watching me flail around, you know, said, can I talk to you after school? Sure. So she came in, she talked to me for a few minutes about things I needed to do. But then she said that quote, they don't care about what you know until they know how much you care. And so, uh, you know, I drove home that night and instead of lesson planning and doing all the stuff that really wasn't working anyway, I thought about that. And so that quote really started to shift the way I was thinking about how I was approaching that classroom. Things did not change overnight, but what I started doing was things like, hey, let's have a chess club. Yeah, you can join me for lunch. After school, I got some, you know, used athletic equipment and just ended up sort of on the playground just hanging out with my kids and playing catch. This thing, their family's homes, getting to know the parents. All those things started to build up and build up. And the classroom, for me, became a much different place, became positive, it became like a family. And like I mentioned, I stayed sort of way past what my commitment was. I stayed for five years. And that was probably the hardest place I've ever left when I went down to grad school. The second quote I want to share is this one. Never ask anyone to do anything that you're not willing to do yourself. The person who said that to me, although I'm sure other people have said, the person who said that to me is my mom, Carolyn. She was a thirty-year elementary teacher in suburban Chicago. I spent many dinners, uh, sitting there listening to her talk bad about people like me. Her principal, her assistant superintendent, her superintendent, it was usually not positive. She was a really, uh, she was a tough critic, fair but tough. So when I went into administration, I could tell that, uh, she was proud but a little disappointed. We taught the same grade. When we taught, we had this huge money experience about it. And when I told her, she was like, really? Are you sure? But then she said that quote, don't ever ask anyone to do anything that you undo yourself. So that guided me in my years of being an elementary principal. It was helping a teacher put a bulletin board up, uh, helping the folks out at recess, helping in the cafeteria, riding the bus with the kids to make sure they had a calm ride home, helping with just about every aspect. When you do that kind of stuff, you see people start to do amazing things. And both schools I was in, I saw teachers start to take a lot of risks in a good way with project-based learning and, and trying new things and experimenting. It was really a powerful thing to see. At this level, it's a little bit harder to do that because I'm in charge of a lot of things. So I'm not gonna teach algebra two. That would be bad. Math is not my thing. And I wouldn't drive a bus. I don't have a CDL. But I think how it impacts me at this level is, if I ask someone to be collaborative, I need to be collaborative too. If I ask someone to be flexible, I need to be flexible too. If, uh, I ask someone, or if I ask someone to hold themselves accountable or each other accountable, sorry, I need to be accountable too. So, so I will hold that promise with you all in speaking to, to folks outside this room. I won't ever ask you to do anything that I won't do myself. The last quote I have is, uh, is, is, I'm not gonna name the person I'm quoting because she'd be mortified that I'm quoting right now. But her quote is, don't worry, we got this. So that quote came to me as a parent, uh, about a year and a half ago. I have a recently turned five-year-old and for the first couple of years, uh, between age two and four and a half, uh, he went through a number of surgeries and things to, to get both of his legs working in sort of a more typical fashion. And with that process, he spent a lot of time in hospitals, a lot of time in cast, countless hours with physical therapists, OTs, that work continues. He's doing great now. Uh, but when we got into this pre-K special class, it's called Ithaca, uh, in our district, we were a mess as a family. We were tired, exhausted, burnout. We went with this teacher, we started talking and she just kind of put her hand up and she said, just wait a second. I just want to tell you something. We got this. It's gonna be okay. We got this. And so that quote has stuck with me for the last year and a half. And, and this person watching her teach my son that year was just completely inspiring. I think it's important for me for a couple of reasons. One is, uh, is the fact that we needed that lifeline as a family in that moment despite the fact that I was the deputy superintendent of the district and, you know, had a lot of resources at my disposal, lots of privilege. We needed that help. We needed that lifeline. And that's what schools should do. That's what we should do for all folks. The other reason I think that quote really resonates with me is the word "we." She didn't say "I." She didn't say, I got it. She said "we." And so when she said that, she was talking about a few things. She was talking about the people in her classroom, the paraprofessionals. She was talking about the OT and the PC on the team. She was talking about the school nurse and the principal. And she was talking about me. And she was talking about my wife. That "we" meant a lot and she said that "we" throughout that year. And a couple of times she had to do a "we got this" with us when we were feeling, when we were stressed out and feeling like things weren't, you know, improving fast enough. So, uh, I am just beyond excited to be starting here in the summer. I want to talk about transition for a second. I will be, I have a very, you know, as you can imagine, engaged job in Ithaca. I will be continuing that until the bitter end. Uh, but I will be making visits to Beacon on a regular basis to get the transition process started and going. Few things I'll do is be part of the vision team meetings. Moving forward, I'll be planning with the administrative team as they work on initiatives for next year. And I'll work with the board in identifying some other things I should be a part of as this transition goes. I will also work on some ways to communicate with the community during this time because it is kind of a long transition. It's a little bit longer than normal. It was really important for me in this process that despite my eagerness to start here, that my son was able to finish his school year because that, that would have been tougher for us as a family. So, so we have a few things left to do on our end. Right now, I am working on some things with my son. We're doing some negotiating. He, he's making sure right now that we're gonna bring our cat with us. When we move, he's making sure we're gonna bring our dog. Right now, we're working on how many Legos he can bring with us. I don't think, what he hasn't figured out yet is like the moving truck will take all the Legos, but I'm sort of using that right now to my advantage. Don't tell them that. Let me see it. So we're working out some stuff as a family. As a family, we're really excited about this, but we're also nervous and apprehensive just moving to a new place. But, but we are very, very excited. So with that said, I think you all in this room and people outside this room and the board and the administration have had sort of a "we got this" attitude for the last year and I just wanted to join in on that. That's how I feel about it. I think that's what we're gonna do. And I'm very, very excited to be working with you. So on that note, thank you.
Good first impression, Matt. I need a motion to go during to executive session and we're not expected to take action afterwards.
Motion to adjourn to executive session to review the history of a particular individual and the board is not expected to take action after a certain amount of time.
I have another question. Conversed with questions? I have a question, of course. We will be allowed to invite Matt into executive session?
We are, right?
It's at our discretion. We are allowed to approve, um, you probably know the law.
So I just...
Can we allow Matt to come into executive session?
We may be, I just wanted to make sure that that is allowed and maybe not do it tonight, but we're gonna take like five, 10 minutes before we go in to just have a conversation and stuff and then go on.
Yeah, I mean, you're allowed to bring an outside party, but, uh, the topic would have to fit that and we didn't go into executive house or that's on history. We wanted to have someone else to talk to.